I call this meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission to order at 7:01. Teri, can you take a roll of the members?
Mr. Hayes?
I'm here.
Holliday?
Present.
Donald? Sir Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd? Urban?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum. Marcus, are there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to offer a change. Kevin Garcia is here from the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan Team. And in deference to his schedule, I'd like to suggest moving him up before the staff report after the monitoring.
Sounds good. Thanks. Welcome, Kevin. All right. Hopefully, you all saw the packet. And there are some minutes from November 6th, 2024, a regular meeting. Unless anyone has any corrections, do, or I should ask, do any members have any corrections or minutes to make to those minutes?
Could I ask a question on, under Item D, Written Communications? The second item there, email thread between Kathleen Jones and Angela Urban, I didn't see to what property that was referring. And I didn't think that it was 108 North Weber Street above that. Is that, am I missing something there? Because it's talking about specifics for repair to a house. But it doesn't say what property it is. Does that make sense?
I believe, not having it in front of me, but I believe the only written communications we received were about the 108 North Weber.
So that second wasn't about that? I didn't recall that. Okay.
It's a letter where they were trying to do repairs, but were not able to find somebody to do it?
Right. It was both of those.
Both of those are for that one property?
Bullets are from the one property, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Got it. Thank you. Thank you for.
Yeah, and there were two emails, one from Stuart and one from Kathleen.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That was my one worry.
Okay. Any other suggested corrections or modifications? Okay. The minutes from the November 6th, 2024 Regular Historic Preservation Commission meeting are available for approval. I just need a voice vote. All members in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All members opposed, please say no.
We need a motion and a second and then a voice vote.
Oh, oops.
Sorry. I moved to approve the minutes from November 6th.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now let's try that again. All members in favor, please say yes.
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 All members opposed, please say no. All right. My apologies on that. The minutes are approved as corrected, or as written, actually, because we didn't actually correct anything. Okay. Are there any written communications that we need to go over?
There are no written communications.
Anyone in the audience? Do you want to address the Historic Preservation Commission on any topic today? Sounds good. All right. And there are not any continued public hearings. There is not any unfinished business. There are not any new public hearings. There is not new business that we're going to go over. Regarding the monitoring of historic properties, hopefully, you all have your assignments still, still monitoring. I know Dennis, would you like to say something about the properties that you monitored?
Yes. So I actually walked through the properties, looked at them briefly. 115 West Main Street, the Tierman Building. It's in stable condition as it is. Its problem is the chipping of the ceramic tiles, especially up at the top of the building. Otherwise, it's no change. 120 to 124 West Main Street, the Bucie Hall Princess Theater, which is now called the Cinema Gallery, and associated with it, Rick's Bakery. And 122 is a stairway up to the second floor. And no change there. 210 South Ray Street, the Hotel Royer, as we know, that's been renovated over the last several years. And we're looking to watch for them to open. And we, I inquired of, just prior to see if you had any comments about it. I didn't receive a reply, but certainly, it's in good shape and looking better all the time. 104 North Central Avenue, this is the Halberstadt House. It's generally in good shape. I know it's for sale currently. It's on the market. But I did notice that the porch that was added to the back, I think it was added more recently to the, or maybe it was there, to the back east side of the house. The supports to the stairwell are falling apart and look to be potentially unsafe. And I'm not sure what we can do about such a thing because the property is listed to a gentleman, I believe, who's in Iowa. And it's been sold. It's no longer locally owned. But we did find out that the person who's managing the property, because it was a rental, I have their address. It's a group called Methona LLC from Indiana, Illinois. Iowa is the owner and it's being managed by JSJ Properties, attention Amanda Heath. So we may want to just let them know that they have a potentially unsafe condition. I don't know what our process is for trying to advise people to fix these properties. They have an obligation to keep them up, but I don't know to what legal level that obligation exists.
We don't have any regulation regarding demolition by neglect, which basically means allowing something to fall apart. However, we do have a property maintenance code that's completely separate from our Historic Preservation Ordinance. So I can chat with our building official and see, you know, there are, we have to think about perceptions of stepping in when it has not been complained about by a tenant or a neighbor. So we'll have to figure out how we want to negotiate that.
Yeah. It, you know, because it's a stairwell, potentially is a safety hazard for the department. So they should be at least aware of it. And sometimes reminding people that we're watching is an impetus for people to make a motion into action.
But this, this will be a good opportunity for us to kind of feel our way through how the HPC works with the other city agencies and organizations and with our landmark owners and residents.
Yeah.
I do appreciate, and this was, this was the hope, that we would be able to keep an eye on these things and, you know, help address issues before things do fall down or before people do get hurt.
Yeah. It's, we're watching, but it's really on the onus of the owner to be mindful of their property. So I just want to, the last two that I'm, I was surveying today was Kennebaptist Church at 402 West Main Street. It's in stable condition. And actually, for a Royer building, it's in pretty good condition, except that the, the paint and some of the, some of the braces for the roof of the Bell Tower need attention. But I've talked to their owner, well, not the owner, but I talked to Sheena Bruitt, who's their secretary. And I had talked to the church before about applying for, there's the National Preservation Association, whatever they're called, does the sacred places grants. And, you know, I've encouraged them to apply for that. I thought, yeah, I would help them do that. But it's a matching grant, so I think they have to think about that seriously. But that would really help them a lot. And then also, they have ordered the Royer plaque, which is designating their building as a Royer Design Building. And they have, it took about two years for this to occur. But it's ordered and they expect it to arrive in about a month. And finally, 108 North Weber Street, the Gothic Revival Cottage, we've already had a little bit of talk about that earlier. Yes, I've got photographs for you to look at. Some of the clapboard is buckling and the, it's really just the lattice work on the porches are falling apart. And that would be an easy fix. But in general, the property is, I'm not really in good shape right now. And that's what I found when I did my survey.
Thanks, Dennis. Thanks for that good attention to detail. And just a reminder to everyone, there is a, we have a Google spreadsheet where we can add, like, I guess, when we do our checks and things like that. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, well, just that, once again, I don't, I'm, when I try to access that, I'm not able to get into it. And so, in fact, I tried it even just here, and I just get that's an error page. So there's something not linking there in mine. I don't know if other people are.
Has anybody been able to access the online spreadsheet?
I didn't try.
Yeah, I, I was able to access it initially, but then I haven't been able to recently, so.
Oh.
Yeah, same. So something's happened where it's just not there. I mean, nothing to report for the 800 block of West Main, but.
Our email change, could it have to do with that?
I think I was using everybody's personal email addresses just to stay away from the transitioning between city addresses. But I will check and see.
Right for me. Yeah, they're all our personal email. That's correct.
All right. Well, we'll get that figured out. Okay. So right before we go into the staff report, I would like to invite Kevin to say some things about Imagine Urbana.
Good evening. Yeah, I don't have any prepared remarks or anything. But if you'll recall, I came to you all several months ago, and I think we had a pretty lively discussion. And we're excited that next week at the Plan Commission meeting, after we've been having a series of study sessions with Plan Commission and really been making changes to the document over the last several months, we are going to be opening the public hearing for, for the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. So, you know, folks have comments to make, and you haven't made comments already. Now is the time to, you know, get those in in the next several weeks. Because after we open the public hearing, it'll probably be open for at least a couple of Plan Commission sessions. So I think the earliest it would probably get to City Council with a recommendation to approve it would be sometime in April. So there is still time to make comments. I think there's, there's probably opportunity to at least add in a couple of items related to historic preservation. I think those could dovetail nicely with some of the other things that we're talking about in the plan. But we, you know, we could really use your input as the Historic Preservation Commission. And so, one, you know, one idea I had just coming out of our last meeting with you all was that, I know we've been talking about updating the Historic Preservation Plan. I think that would be a good item to, to add into the plan. So, you know, with your blessing, I could find a spot where that, where that would work. And so, but beyond that, I just wanted to come here. And if you have comments, if you've all read the plan, great. If you haven't yet, encourage you to do so and offer your input. I think maybe some of you have commented already on the online version, so I appreciate that. But yeah, really just wanted to, to let you all know it's still available for reading and commenting. And, you know, but we're, we're getting towards the, towards the finish line here.
I have a question about that, Kevin. So yes, we, we really appreciated you coming. I guess now it's been several months. But we, you know, we did have that as our commission homework, and we were going individually and putting the comments the way that you showed us. My question, though, is, is the plan being adjudicated, like, in real time? Or if we go to it now, would we need to be sending, like, the same type of comments? Or could we see some of what we already commented on reflected?
So we've, we've tried to address most comments that we've received so far. I'm not sure if we've gotten to all of them. So if you have made comments and changes haven't been made, we still have your comments. I don't know if there's really a good way to, like, view comments. Like, if you, if you were to go on yourself, I don't know if there's a way to see comments you already made. So, so I guess there's a possibility if you went on and you made another comment, you'd be double commenting, but that's better, better than losing the comment. So, so yeah, if you know, if you know you made a comment and you haven't seen it reflected, you know, feel free to add more to it, just to, you know.
Or maybe it didn't get approved.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, that, that's, that kind of brings up a good point. We should. I think we've been sort of keeping track of, you know, changes as we make them. But it would be good to just make sure that we at least have reasoning. Yeah, say if somebody made a comment and we didn't agree with it, to have some, some tracking of why we didn't okay that, so.
Kevin, one question that I think some members and other folks had raised in the past was in the 2005 plan, it kind of started off with a, hey, here is a list of the other plans that this refers to. It doesn't necessarily incorporate it. And the 98 Preservation Plan was still kept as not an element, but it was acknowledged in the 2005 Comp Plan. And it also listed some things that it was superseding, like the Downtown to Campus Plan.
Right.
Is there something similar in this new plan that says we're acknowledging these 22 plans that are still active? And this list of three things are no longer active because they're incorporated or they're obsolete?
Yeah, there is. I feel like there was, I feel like that's been in there for, for a little while. But also, we've been at our recent study sessions with the Plan Commission. We've been kind of talking in a little bit more detail about what older plans we're going to carry over. Typically, what we're, what we are carrying over are things that were actually approved amendments to the existing comprehensive plan. So those are things like the Bicycle Master Plan, the 2012 Downtown Plan, Greenways and Trails Plan for the county, Hazard Mitigation Plan, some things that actually went through the process of going through our Plan Commission and then getting approved by City Council. So we're, we're discussing which of those we want to carry forward as sort of parts of this plan. But there are certainly other plans that we call out that have kind of influenced this plan. Things like the Downtown Public Realm Study, which we did a couple of years ago. That kind of, you know, flavors this plan, but it's not an official piece of the plan, if that makes sense. I don't think we mentioned the 98 Historic Preservation Plan. To be honest, it's been a while since I've looked at that one. So I'm not sure. If there are elements of that that we should carry over, then I'm open to that, but yeah.
If, if it is either too old or not as relevant anymore, 27 years on, if, when we, they do a revision, a revised Preservation Plan, could that be then reviewed by Plan Commission and City Council to be adopted as an element to the new Comp Plan?
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly an option. And especially if the new plan says something like, we need to update our Preservation Plan. So that would be a good way to, you know, to, to codify that that is something that we have done.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, when I reviewed it, I didn't see any mention of the, of our old planning Preservation Plan, or Preservation Plan. But, but I, but your comment about, like, if there is some kind of mention in any form, because what we've talked about as well is, of course, you know, we will be publishing the Preservation Plan after this Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. And so, you know, we will be mentioning, mentioning the Comprehensive Plan, of course, as part of, you know, how we're going about this, how we're even planning this plan, right? And so, my point of that is, though, you know, any kind of way to show that, like, we're reflecting from, off of one another, I think, is important.
Yeah.
And I guess just to, to play on that, moving forward, doing grant writing for a new Preservation Plan, it would be helpful if Historic Preservation, whether it's the 1980, 1998 Plan or just the philosophies of Historic Preservation were mentioned in the Comp Plan, so that when a grant is written, we can say Historic Preservation is an important element in the new 2025 Comprehensive Plan.
Any other comments?
So are we still able to access the online input thing? Is that?
Yeah, and I was actually going to pull that up, you know, just in case folks watching at home have, you know, weren't also watching several months ago. I doubt there's anybody like that, because they probably watch every, every meeting. But let's see. Oh, this is our old website. What's going on here? Let's see if I, okay. So also for you watching at home, we have a new website, urbanail.gov. And then, so from the main page, you can go, it's under Departments and Services, which, you know, we had to find a place for it. But Imagine Urbana is, there's a link here, and that'll take you just to our page about the Comprehensive Plan. And then, all right, that looks weird. I don't, I don't know if this is actually going to take us there. Oh, that's going to take you there. Let me see. There should be a link directly to it here. So there's, okay, here it is. Review the draft. It's kind of buried here. You can also get there through the Imagine Urbana website, which is one we've had up for the entirety of the Comprehensive Plan. But you can access the draft plan here. This URL is kind of long. So it's, it's easiest to just get there through, through the website. I think actually, if we trim this here, this should probably take us there. So it's online.ncodeplus.com/regs/urbana-il. And yeah, that'll take you to the front page. But then in here, so there's, again, there's a how to comment here that will teach you how, or show you how to comment. So let's see if I can just look through here and see how to comment. Okay. So yeah, if you, usually I see this on the, on the other end, on the editor's side. So if I wanted to make a comment, say on, so I think since last time I was here, we actually added some maps and things, which there are some, some drafts of the maps from a few weeks ago on the wall over here. So we've actually updated them since then. But if you want to look at those later on, you can do that. But so for instance, if you want to look at, in this plan, oh, this has some edits in there. But it's a draft plan, so that's to be expected. So instead of future land use, we're calling things place types now. We just thought that that made more sense than future land use. But in this section, so there, kind of describe all those. But then, you know, if you wanted to make a comment on the map, I think you could just make a comment over here. And it tells you right here what you're actually commenting on. So if you're just whatever section you've got over here. I don't know if you actually have to put in an email address. Let's see if we can just make a comment here. Map looks good. Let's see if I can comment without adding any. Okay, there you go. You don't even need to add a name or an, or an email address, so. So yeah, so that's pretty easy. Again, yeah, this will be open for at least, I'd say, at least until April. So you have some time, time to check it out. If you are looking at the maps, I was able to get sort of higher resolution ones into this software the other day. So if you click on it, it should, well, it might download it to your computer, and then you, then you can open it up. But that's nice, so you can check those out in more detail. But yeah, I think structure has been the same for months. So this should, you know, if you've come to this website before, this, sort of the, the bones of the plan are, are the same as they have been. Some of the verbiage may have changed a little bit. But the, yeah, the content's there. It's just more refined now. And it's, it's in much better shape since we've been having essentially study sessions with our Plan Commission for the last month, month and a half, every Thursday, so.
Well, I just had a question actually for my colleagues, which is when you look at the different big moves and you think about the places where recommendation for revising the Historic Preservation Plan could be, there are multiple places. And I'm assuming you don't want redundancy.
Yeah.
So when I look at it and I think about things like promoting incremental development, investing in financially and environmentally resilient infrastructure, enhancing Urbana's economic vibrancy, advancing a clean and green community, the Historic Preservation Plan can intersect with all of those.
Right.
Is there, yeah. So is, do my colleagues have a sense of where we would best position such a recommendation? I mean, big move number four, make downtown the economic driver of the city. Almost like we need a big side move. Like, we need another big move, but it's just like a side move.
Yeah. No, and I, I mean, you pointed out something that's, that's tricky is that there are, we've run into several things that, you know, it's hard to slot certain things into sort of one area or another.
Can you add a new letter? I mean, how about letter L and then deal with Historic Preservation as an important aspect of city life and city, city culture and city history?
I'm not sure. I'm kind of hesitant to add a whole nother big move after we've, you know, had these on the books for so long and without giving it some serious thought. But, I mean, that's certainly an option.
I'm not seeing any of the, like, in understanding that they may not be approved or what have you, but I don't really see any changes to, like, the things that I know, like, at least a few of us had commented already. I don't, I don't see any of those. And so how do we, like, like, how do we know that what we're commenting on is being viewed or considered or, or, you know, discarded, which is fine. But we just, like, you know, we, we did spend time reviewing this. And so, you know, to do it again, if we're just being redundant, it's pointless because it's not going to be approved. You know, we, we just need to know how to move forward, I guess, with that.
Yeah. Well, what I can do is, is go through and, and make sure that we've addressed all the, all the comments we've received. And I'll, I can figure out a way to, to best convey that to folks. So it might take a week or two, but, but I can do that.
I wonder.
I do appreciate that folks have read this and made comments, so.
I wonder if the committee needs to go and advocate in the, at a meeting, that would make more of a personal expression of the interest of the committee?
Like what kind of a meeting, like, at the Plan Commission, or?
Maybe, I don't know, at whatever level that you're working to consolidate your final plan.
Yeah, I mean, so, next week, we open up the public hearing, you all should receive a flyer in the mail sometime this week, if you haven't already. So, once, you know, once the public hearing's open, I think that's a really good time for, for folks to come out and, and voice your opinion, whether it's as a representative of the committee, or, or of the commission, or just, you know, personally, then, yeah, that would be a good time to do it.
If I can say that, that, in my personal opinion, that the place to put the historic preservation plan update is under big move three, address the needs of individual areas, because an update of the historic preservation plan would make it more comprehensive across the city, and not just relevant to downtown, but a new historic preservation plan should involve surveying the city as a whole, and understanding in a granular way, the historic preservation needs of different parts of the city. And that, like, a one size fits all ordinance probably doesn't work anymore. And so, a good, new historic preservation ordinance would be tailored to understanding the needs of individual pieces of the city in different ways. And I think, and what that also means is, it's, some of these other places that historic preservation is missing, where it kind of obviously has a role, there's maybe an ability to add a bullet point, like, an economic driver for downtown, like, and the cultural vibrancy of downtown, like, even just to mention that the historic fabric is crucial for that vibrancy, is probably all that is needed, to make sure that that element of historic preservation being essential for the way that we understand downtown, it, it should just be more visible, I think, is probably what folks are thinking, so that even if we have, let's update the historic preservation plan in one place, the idea of history, or historic fabric, or any of those themes are not just absent in all the places that it should come up, which definitely, downtown, arts programs, all of that is tied to increasingly what we think of as intangible cultural heritage also, and not just the buildings, but the, but the way that people care about them, so.
Yeah.
Right, and people, you know, people think historic preservation in their mind just goes to, like, buildings that are 100 or 200 years old, right? And that's not what Kate is saying, that, you know, and the, the, the fabric, actually, that was what was going through my mind too, because just the, the fabric of our, of our, of our city, of our neighborhoods, you know, they, they each have their own special heritage, and so, yes, I agree, just any kind of way, it doesn't have to be a huge move or anything, just some kind of way to acknowledge that, and if the public hearing is the place to do that, we can certainly, you know, attend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, like, like sustainability, another lowercase buzzword, it, it is another way that you look at everything, as opposed to looking at itself, and how it ought to be done. It's, whenever you look at a project, is there a way that historic preservation can be incorporated into that project or that plan? Maybe it doesn't work in every place, but it's like complete streets, you might not do something in a particular street, but you're always thinking about it when you do look at a project or something.
And it certainly does become a useful topic for the interest of the community, to have adaptive reuse of buildings, which is an economical and historical and efficient way of increasing value in the community, without building new things or tearing something old down.
So maybe in that regard, I mean, I really like Kate's idea, their suggestion, when you then look at what the affiliated big ideas are, and it points to one and three, it seems like big idea four could be there, when you look at what that says, Urbana embraces its cultural vibrancy and character, but when you look at the objectives, it doesn't fit. So maybe we could add one more objective there, 4.5, under big idea four, Urbana, that would really articulate something about historic preservation. I mean, it says it's a destination for music and the arts, it's very performance and events-oriented, but it's not thinking about longer, I mean, shopping, performance events, murals, sculptures are there, but buildings aren't there.
Yeah, I feel like, Angela, you may have made a comment about that in this section, so I'll, I'll look at what you said as well.
If then, then that, to the, to the big move about addressing the needs of individual areas, then it would make sense to reference big idea number four, because of the historic character of those places. And anything else that references big, I mean, if we, if we put that there, under the big ideas, then anything else that references big ideas, as a touchpoint, would connect with it.
Yeah, and I would, I just want to reiterate, you know, we, we really appreciate the Plan Commission involving us in this process, you know, and I know, there's a lot of people that have been able to look at this draft, but just being able to have that time, to have that forenotice, has been important for us, and, you know, as you know, we're, we're discussing our next step for, next steps for updating the historic preservation plan, and so, for us, the Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan is a big part of us moving, moving forward with what we're doing. So we're, we plan to use it, to reference it, and, so yeah, we just, we appreciate, you know, you keeping us involved like you have.
Yeah, well, likewise, I'm glad to hear you say that you're gonna use it for your work as well, so, it's exciting.
Other comments, or anything? Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks a lot.
All right, Marcus, are you ready for the staff report?
Sure. Probably the most important thing that people have been wondering about is the status of the certified local government grant applications. I don't have a whole lot of information to provide, I did get some communication with, I think it was Susan Baker from the state, and John Presley, she was able to, like, squeeze a communication to happen. So, it, I was reminded by them that the funds for the CLG grants are federal funds that are passed through the state. So, ever since November, December, January, funds have become a lot more tenuous, so they have not issued any grants, or made any announcements about grants. I am still very hopeful that the program will continue to be funded, and grants will be awarded, but, you know, and, and certainly, communication could be better, whether it's yes, no, we don't know, you know? I made it kind of clear to them that it would be nice to get, you know, even if it's every two months, just a, hey, we haven't forgotten about you, we still don't know anything ourselves, so we'll just move along, you know, in that regard. So that's the CLG grant applications, we have had no new certificate of appropriateness applications, we still do have a couple that are progress, the, the one for the Hotel Royer, the exterior, they're working on things. I heartily encourage you to drive by, at night especially, and you can see the new exterior lighting, and you don't get to see as many work vehicles, but I'm, I'm kind of encouraged by how it looks at night. You can still, you can see lights from the inside as well, work does continue, I was informed, I think, that the week before last, they were filling the pool, so, things, you know, are moving along. No word yet from a potential opening day, I still have on my checklist that Mr. Pryor had offered to give everybody who came to the church tour, an advanced little tour beforehand, so I'm gonna hold them to that when they get closer to that stage. We have had no applications for landmarks, if you have a place that would like to landmark themselves, give a holler, and we can talk with them. And, I think, really, that's about all I've got that's been happening, we haven't had any complaints, I did get notified, I had a realtor call about the Bill's House on West Elm Street, that is also a rental property right now, that it's up for sale as well, and he asked, you know, if somebody wanted to demolish that, what would they have to do, and I said, they'd have to get a certificate of appropriateness to demolish it, and, and frankly, I think I told him that it was the Bill's House that kind of instigated the historic preservation ordinance push back in the late 90s, if, was it, okay. So he's like, okay, thanks for letting me know. So, so, moving along, doing what we can with limited staff time, and that's really my staff report, and I can answer questions if there's anything I've forgotten.
Yeah, no questions here. I, I also have been just driving by, walking by the Hotel Royer, and I noticed, a few days ago, they were doing some welding to the exterior stairs, so that seemed like a good, just good progress, because again, it just means that, you know, perhaps, you know, they're going through their inspections, they had a little bit of repair to do, so, yeah, it just continues to look like, you know, progress forward, so.
I've got, I've got one more. Another thing, walking through the downtown, you know, I'm going and looking at all the different buildings we have that are of value to us, and, as we know, the SIP Yard, we lost the facade of the building, then we, it was created into a outside drinking establishment, now it's defunct, and now it's billboarded, and there's a political poster on the cover, and it doesn't serve the city to have what I think is a kind of an eyesore moment downtown. So, this is why I think it's really important for this commission to consider, we're seriously working on a design overlay district for the downtown, because whatever comes next, it may not remain a blank, empty alleyway, it'll be redesigned, and the redesign is gonna affect the rest of the block, and we're looking for things that we give guidance, so that whatever new construction does occur there eventually, we'll have harmonic, harmonic semblance to elements on the street, so that it's not, it doesn't look like a spaceship has landed in the middle of the downtown, you know, or some kind of escalator with apartments sticking out of it, we want something that, I mean, this is the time that our, our commission could give guidance, and we should have adopted an ordinance, or a design overlay district, and I think we should still talk about it, I think that should be one of the things that we discuss in the coming year. Without guidance, you get surprises.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. The next item is, we will hold a study session on our historic preservation planning for the plan. Just to give a little, for those, like, a reminder, I guess, from when we met last, so we met in January, we were discussing what this would look like, it does, it does give us a little hiccup, what you just mentioned, Marcus, about the CLG status, because part of our, part of our timeline was keeping in mind when the CLG grant would open next, which I believe would be next October, November timeframe. I don't think that we should necessarily deviate from our timeline, just because there's a lot that could happen between now and then, and just to remind you all, like, the time, timeline really was rather wide, I guess, so the internal review, looking at our plan, that, that time period, we kind of estimated between, like, February, March timeframe, so there's still time to look, if you haven't had a chance to look at our plan from 1998. And then, April, May timeframe is when we're focusing more on external plans, external, as in other cities' historic preservation plans, but also external to us here in Urbana, so any relevant Urbana plans that we want to, to highlight or keep in mind. The June, July timeframe is when we talked about, we would come together and, with our suggestions for what do we want in an updated plan, and then, the August, September timeframe was going out and trying to get some better ideas for cost estimates. So if we still kind of keep to that timeline, we have a little bit of wiggle room there at the end. And, like I said, we're still in the beginning parts, you still have time, if you haven't had a chance to look at our plan, I know we talked last time, that there are some parts that we, we think should remain in some form, but I would say, we need a, we need a way to get these comments to one another, and I don't, I think that we're not gonna have a meeting next month, possibly? Yeah, so we need to figure out a way today, probably, that we can get those comments somehow, do you have any suggestions on how we should do that?
I do, as a matter of fact, I was thinking about that earlier today. Again, we are bound by the Open Meetings Act, but you all did a great job with the CLG grant application, so my suggestion would be, find a partner, groups of two, other non-commission members can be added to those without breaking OMA, and discuss amongst your group, the, the pros and cons, what you like and, and don't find helpful in the current plan, what is still relevant, what is no longer relevant, because we already have an ordinance now. And then, give me a bullet point list from your working group, and then, at our next meeting, or even before the next meeting, because I'm allowed to communicate to you, I can say, this group gave me these comments, this, you know, compile all those to you, and then, if that happened during April, then in May, we would have that to discuss. Then you could come up here in the study session at the May meeting, okay, these are great comments, these, you know, aren't super helpful, but it gives us a, a group consensus of, of what the 98 plan, or is lacking, and what you might want out of the next plan. And, extra commission members might be here tonight, but you can also find people out in the community, I could also maybe talk with Bridget, and, you know, talk with Kevin, and say, you know, one suggestion might be doing a press release, and saying, the Historic Preservation Commission is exploring revising its 1998 preservation plan, if you are interested in participating in discussions, please contact Marcus. And then if people contact us, then I can put them in contact with you all, if you want that kind of interaction, if you'd rather just do it with select people, or invite people. If you'd rather just do it with select people, or invite people, I completely understand, because you'd be the ones having to work with them.
Yeah, I think we're open to inviting others as well. Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since we're having this open house and tour on May 31st, could we use that as an opportunity to make an announcement and start a conversation about that? I mean, it's not the commission, but that would be an opportunity to speak to a roomful of people who are at least interested tangentially, and encourage that kind of participation. And this is not completely confirmed, but this panel will include a representative from Landmarks Illinois, Elizabeth Blazias from Preservation Futures in Chicago. And so, there'll be people there who do the work of updating historic preservation plans also. So, it might be an opportunity to jumpstart that public piece.
And that would, just chronologically, that would happen after, hopefully, we've got the working groups having gone through and assessed the current plan, and come up with what they'd like to see out of the next one. But plenty of time for input and feedback from outside.
I got another question, or maybe suggestion, or maybe it's redundant. But, so, the open house that you're talking about, Katie, is, it's not gonna be really a forum for the public to talk, and it's more for us, or is it a presentation to the public, but not about the plan itself, right?
So, no, it is an event, the exhibition that is currently at the Cranor Art Museum, that both David and I contributed to, the Making Place for the Arts at Home Exhibition that focuses on mid-century modern architecture in Champaign-Urbana.
And there's gonna be a tour.
One of the public events associated with the exhibition is a morning symposium, discussing preservation challenges associated with mid-century modern architecture. And then, the afternoon piece is the open house, where four houses are open. That morning panel will have representatives who deal in historic preservation across the state of Illinois, speaking to the issue of encouraging a greater degree of engagement in preservation of modern properties here, specifically. And so, while it's not an event of this commission, it is an opportunity to have a large public, who are in an audience, to talk about modern houses and preservation, and to encourage their participation in, in a conversation about a preservation plan.
So, that, that sounds good. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be really appropriate for our commission, following that open discussion, to invite the public to a presentation of where we stand and where we think we're going as a commission, rather than as the university's project? And maybe do that in the auditorium of the Urbana Free Library, or someplace that would be typical place where a community meets to learn about projects in, within our city. It'd seem, it'd seem to me that it'd be nice to have an outreach event for an hour. We could, we could post what we've learned, what we think we're going to, get feedback on it before, before we close the process of doing it. But I think it'd be more specific to our city, even though I love mid-century modern houses.
The, the point was not to use that event to do this public engagement, but to advertise that we want to do public engagement.
Right, you said that, I forgot.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, the follow-through would be to place that we could do that, and that would be a nice, a thing to do, is schedule like a, a week or two after the seminar process.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I, I do like the idea of however we can get it advertised. I don't know that we'll know what we want by then. But, that, you know.
Well, whenever we do know, and we wanna get some feedback about it.
But I, but I guess what I'm trying to say is that part of what we want is hearing from the community, so that we can holistically outline what we want as, we as in the community. So, I think it's a good, great idea. That date sounds just fine to, to kind of just drum up, you know, the likely potential people who would be interested in being part of this process. So, yeah, that sounds great. And tangentially related, since we're not gonna meet, meeting in May, May is Historic Preservation Month. And while this is happening at the very end, we meet in May, or we likely will meet in May, we won't have time by then to get ourselves on the books for the farmer's market, and any kind of drumming up support for this May 31st event. So, I know that's not exactly on the agenda, but that's something that maybe we need to do on our own or something, but we definitely need to help get May 31st advertised, and help, help you with that.
Well, under, under the preservation plan agenda item discussion, if you think that we will be at a point where you want to get input and feedback from the public about historic preservation planning, and where Urbana is going in the future, you know, I can start working with the market to the square to have a table. If you, like, thought we would want to design an online survey to take on your phone, or something, to start getting import, or feedback from the public. How important do you think historic preservation is, you know, compared to world peace, or famine, or free pinball games?
Yes, please.
And so, we could, we could have tables during May.
Yeah.
That's important to the world.
Yeah, yeah. I think that we, we do. So, I mean, however that can happen.
Yeah.
We know the date, you know, it's always on Saturdays. So, if, if you can help make that happen for May, for us, we can, we can volunteer to man the table.
I, I really do like the idea, though, of pairing up, or whatever, I mean, a shared document somewhere, if that's even possible, just to look at this document, and to think about how it was structured, why it was structured that way. And, and, in a sense, it's like, before we start soliciting input from people, if we've thought very carefully about, in a sense, if we started to draft a new structure, where we know what work needs to be done, then we can be much more responsive to the kinds of suggestions. We would know where to slot things in, or we would have a position on it. I mean, the document's kind of strange, and, and when you think about what's there and where it is, and what would we want to take away, what would we want to add, what would we want to amend? If it was just the verbs for how to act upon the, the document, what, you know, keep, transform, you know, get rid of it, update, add, like, the very first thing is a history of writing these documents. And we would add to that, like, our new chapter, but.
And just keeping, and keeping in mind that this one was written pre-ordinance and anything, and it was, part of its mission, I think, was to drum up interest in historic preservation, where we need to grow that interest, but we don't have to set the, the base for it.
Yeah.
Don't want to lose all the history, though.
Yeah. I love, for example, that there's a bibliography in there, and there's an opportunity to use this document as a way to say, like, this, these are the touch, touchstones for us intellectually, for what we're trying to accomplish. There'd be some amazing text referenced there that somebody else can then hopefully find, or we can somehow provide for people, a copy sitting somewhere if somebody wants to learn more.
I would also, there is a group called the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, and it has a ton of information for all of the lovely people in the world who want to update their historic preservation plans. It has sample plans, it has sample timelines and processes. It's like a great resource for not only looking at a plan that's 25 years old, but looking at what other recent plans are.
Yeah, I'd love to see, I haven't looked at that, but I'd love to.
It's really, it's really nice. It has a lot of good information. And they're also very happy to chat with you, if, if you want to do that. So, if, I would be very much in favor of it at some point in the process, thinking about how do we reach out to something like this organization, to see what their guidances for a city of this size in particular, and what kind of ordinances are, are typical.
So, we, the City of Urbana's Historic Preservation Commission is a member of NAPSE, and that, they're the ones that offer most of those webinars.
Yep.
And as a member, you're allowed to go to them free. I'm, I believe, and I can check if you want, I mean, they have a great listserv. I've got three or four emails from here, of like, people that said, you know, "How much did your preservation plan cost?" "Well, it costs $50,000, and here's a really great city." It's a great listserv. I think you would be able to sign up for it if you wanted, be able to ask questions if you wanted, but also then could access all of the resources if you wanted to poke around, which I haven't done all of that yet. But if you're interested, I can check and see as members of our commission what you have access to. So, I'll do that. But yeah, so, I, I would be glad to put together a template form, kind of like with the CLG application, for the 98 Plan, for the working groups to use, to say, you know, "Keep, ditch, transform, add, whatever." And then, your group can fill it out, email it to me, and then, at some point in time, I can anonymize it and share it with you all. I think the next, if, if you want to do that sort of working group thing, the next step is to either here or outside of here, put your group together, and, and let me know who's on the group, so that I can then, you know, set up some communication method.
And remind me, so, we can have one buddy, right?
One, one HPC buddy, and as many non-HPC buddies as you want.
Okay. So, is anyone against the suggestion about the buddy system? Okay.
I don't know if I'll do it, but I...
I'm in favor of it.
And you certainly don't have to use the buddy system. If you prefer to just work on, on it yourself, that's absolutely fine. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Well, then, what, why don't we plan for it? I mean, or, let me back that up, because I'm using plan too much here. Let's, let's decide our buddies, grab a buddy or not. If you don't want one, it's fine. You can do it how you want. But since we will not be meeting again till beginning of May, my suggestion for the buddies is, one, get together, discuss the plan, the 1998 Plan. But, two, start pulling some examples that you like or dislike from other cities. Kate, the National Alliance for Preservation Commissions that you mentioned, there's a lot of examples on that site. But there, there might just be places that you've been, that you are interested in. So, grab those, start looking at them, and discuss with your counterpart. Go ahead.
And if you want to share them with me, I can put them into the Google Drive. Don't put any comments in there, because that's talking, but other people can see them.
And I'm already discovering that many of the links on there to these great examples don't work, or, I mean, I, they're going to a general page, they haven't been updated. So, we might use our membership to say, "Hey, could you update that?" I love the way that's structured on that page, but so far, I'm just trying to get to Burwen, Illinois, and haven't found it yet, so.
And if you find one that is giving you an issue, and you don't have time to contact that city, let me know, tell me the link that's broken, or whatever, and I can spend five minutes trying to make that connection, and get that, so that you don't have to. But if you can fix it, good on you.
Okay. Can, can you guys decide your buddies?
Like, here on the fly?
Or, yes, or can you just assign people or something? But, and I would suggest, though, that Laura and Trent can be involved in this process, even though they're not here today.
One, I mean, just a heads up, since I didn't realize we weren't meeting next month, but the, the next meeting is likely Wednesday, May 7th. It's, and I absolutely cannot be there. It's our biggest event of the whole year in the department, so I can never be there when it's Wednesday, the first Wednesday of May. So, just, I'm just very conscious of that right now. My input will need to be indirect for that evening.
Will anybody else know right now that they can't make May the 7th? Because if we're not gonna have a quorum, then there's no reason planning on it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Andrew is implicated too. Kate could be. It's our Sasaki Day lecture, and award ceremony, banquet. It's a big deal, but.
Terry, what's the process of shifting a date from the regular scheduled calendar?
If it were the next day, I could do it, you know, sure, but.
The next day, or the next Wednesday?
Um, I think probably either one. I'll double check here.
Can't do the next day, because that's planned commission meeting.
Okay. So, the easiest thing to do might be to simply go to the 14th, because unless they have council chambers done on alternating Wednesdays.
I would have to check with the count, availability of the council chambers, and also probably do a poll of the HPC members of who can attend. That's probably the first thing I'd do, before I try and see if the council chambers is available. I could even do a poll of different dates.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, if we could do that, that would be important, because I'd, I'd hate for us to miss Historic Preservation Month.
Yes.
Okay. Or, I guess, there is the potential, even like, we did that in April, if, and then we did skip May. So, I mean, some kind of way, it'd be a shame to miss both April and May, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We, we could have an event in the Royer District, maybe. We have two plaques that are coming up, and I think we were thinking about trying to schedule them during the boneyard, but we could, that's in April, but we could wait, maybe, and try to see if we could have a ribbon cutting. I mean, that's another thing that this commission might want to do. Up to you, of course.
I don't, I'm not clear on what you're talking about.
Oh. Well, two buildings, Kane &amp; Baptist Church and the Royer Hotel, have ordered newer revised plaques, and whenever, even though they might be up, we could have an official ribbon cutting in front of them, which could be an event for the public. I mean, that, you know, it would be like, as interesting as having a downtown walk during Preservation Week, or whatever.
Dennis was basically brainstorming on Preservation Month events.
Yep, got you. Yeah, that, that's great.
Did I not explain that? Okay.
No, I, yeah, I got you now, yeah. But yeah, thank you. Okay. Yeah, definitely look into that. Okay, so, yeah. So, if we can leave here knowing who we're talking to, that would be useful. Of course, we want to involve our public, at least those that are tuning in right now, and anyone else who reaches out to us, of course. So, we can add that to our buddy list as well. Anybody want to volunteer for a buddy, or?
Do we, do we? It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't, doesn't really matter, yeah, so.
You want to go alphabetical by first name? I'm just, okay. We will figure out, it'll be alphabetical by first name, pairs. Because you weren't fast enough to come up with it yourself.
Does that mean I'm with Andrew? He doesn't want a buddy?
If somebody wants to opt out of the buddy system, we just skip over, because we've got, we've got seven members, right? Okay. All right. There we go. They picked. So, Andrew and Dennis. Angela, who are you buddying up with?
It doesn't matter. And if you guys want to be buddies, that's totally fine. I'm fine. I can reach out to...
I'm happy to be a buddy.
Anybody's buddy.
All right.
Oh, it's the hardest part. I have a bunch of students.
Okay. And so, we're gonna pair up Trent and Laura? Laura?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll invite our public to join our buddy teams, too, if you'd like, yeah.
Susan? Susan, which group do you want to be with? No, you got to pick one.
You want a call?
Okay, I'm going to put you with Angela and David. Fellas?
Trent.
Okay, you're with Trent and Laura. Excellent. All right, cool.
Anything? Question?
We have a section for announcements, but that's Angela's.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if there's anything else for our study session, because I think that's all we needed to accomplish today. Okay, we know what we're doing, internal review, external review. And then, when we meet again, May timeframe, sometime, not the first Wednesday, perhaps, try to meet with your buddy before that date, before our next meeting.
Definitely meet multiple times with your buddy because you have to turn in your review sheets of the 98 plan. Those need to be done before the end of April.
Okay, all right, no other comments? All right, so, announcements, what was the announcement we wanted to include?
Let's start off with a recap and announcement in full of the May 31st thing.
May 31st, and there will be a day-long event held in conjunction with the Making Place for the Arts at Home Exhibition at the Cranert Art Museum. It has as a central focus arts culture, as well as modern architecture in Champaign-Urbana. In the morning, and these times will need to be confirmed, but at about 9:30, we will have a panel of folks who specialize in historic preservation in Illinois, talking about opportunities and challenges related to modern architecture and preservation, specifically here in our own community. And the second half of the day, between 1:00 and 5:00, there will be an open house of four historic properties designed by the architects Jack Baker, John Ruplinger, and Dick Williams. And registration for that tour is open. The Champaign County History Museum is handling registrations for that tour, and they are gathering funds. It is a fundraiser for that institution. And if there are any questions about the tour, there is a webpage that answers a few of them, that, again, is hosted by the Champaign County History Museum, and I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions or point you to folks who can answer them.
PACA is going to celebrate for, on May 3rd? Yes, the first Sunday in May. The 4th, thank you. Okay, we're celebrating the 120th anniversary of the building of the Joseph Royer Home and the 100th anniversary of the publication of fairy book by Adelaide Royer and illustrations by her sister, Nell Brooker Mayhew. And so, we'll have, and we're going to have Kim Sanford come in, and she will be Aunt Boog and be telling stories to children. We'll have make-your-own fairy garden, you know, decorate your fairy garden door for kids, and then tours with a special emphasis on the dining room of the Royer House, because those, there's beautiful murals up that were done by Ms. Brooker Mayhew, Adelaide's sister. And it'll be a wonderful affair from 1:00 to 5:00, and I think it'll be, so, sponsored by PACA, Chris Anck, and Bryan Adams, so, thanks.
Do you have any written or digital info yet? And it, because we're months out.
I've got a great poster coming.
Okay, and who is, I'm assuming registration isn't open yet, but will it be through PACA?
What we'll do is, it's just, you know, free to the public, like we used to do house tours.
Okay, but you don't have to preregister?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
I don't think there's a lack of prudence in that. Now, we won't be able to tour the mother-in-law cottage because it is rented, but this is a singular opportunity, though, to go into the Royer.
Awesome.
Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for sharing that with us. Look forward to seeing that flyer, and the date that you said was May 4th?
Yes.
The first Sunday in May. What a great way to kick off the Preservation Month. Any other announcements? All right, well, we will adjourn this public meeting at 8:17 PM. No business will be discussed after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for coming.